Sean Fitzpatrick, President of Michigan City Council. And we've been in conversations about the double track for some time now. And the project is definitely moving along. So I invited Mr. Nolan and they were gracious enough to accommodate us to have this workshop to update the public, update anyone on the council and everyone else, the mayor and some people from the city as far as where the project is going next, what are the next phases and what we could be expecting and also to ask any questions that you guys may have. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike Nolan, the President of South Shore.
Thank you, Sean. And thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, especially as difficult it is with this weather. I know it wasn't easy for us all to get here, so thank you. Thank you to the road crews who did all their hard work to make it as safe as possible. My name again is Mike Nolan, President of South Shore Line. I'm joined here by Nicole Barker. Nicole is the Project Manager for the Double Track Project. Rihanna Anderson is one of our project engineers. Greg Lorenzi is in the back of the room. Greg just joined us. Greg is the Deputy Project Manager. And they're the core internal NICTI team that's running the project and working daily to make it happen. As Sean mentioned, we're here tonight to refresh the discussion regarding the project itself. We are very, we just passed a very important milestone in the project in the federal process to get federal funding. This happened on February 10th of this year when the federal government entered the project into the engineering phase of their New Starts project. So I think maybe do we want to go through a quick slideshow here?
Okay.
Okay. We've got a PowerPoint presentation. We'll try to make it, get through it as quickly as possible. There may be, I know people may have questions, so we'll have time for that. I'm going to step aside here. Try to get out of your guys' way. Okay. Hey, Anna. Go ahead. So we started this project, well, actually Norm Carlson, who's Metro's Chairman, said that this project was started in 1927 at a board meeting of Samuel Insel's original South Shore Freight Railroad and Passenger Railroad when they thought that it would be a good idea to double-track the railroad. So we're some 90 years later and we're getting it done. About 10 or 15 years ago, an effort started here between the railroad and Michigan City to move towards that vision. And there was a process that took place to decide where the tracks would be, north along Lakefront, wherever the tracks are now, or perhaps along the CSX. And that process took place, as they said, about 10 years ago. It's a major capital investment project. It's 16 miles of track that we're going to lay between Michigan City and Gary. We have some sections of double-track right now, but most of the rest of the railroad is single-track. You can go ahead and go. So you can see where the project begins, just to the east of the station in Miller, and I'm probably standing in somebody's way. Just to the east of the station in Gary Metro. And it ends just to the west of Michigan Boulevard here in Michigan City. Along the way, we're doing improvements to five stations. We're building four new bridges. We're building high-level platforms in Michigan City, in Opton Dunes, and at Miller, improving the station here in downtown Michigan City with a parking structure and putting in high-speed crossovers along the way. Essentially, show of hands, how many people have ridden the train? How many people have been delayed because there's a train coming the other direction? Okay. I probably don't have to explain the project. But this is, this is coming into Miller and Gary, and that's a train coming from Michigan City going west, and that's a train coming from Miller going east. So our trains have to wait whether in double-track territory until a train passes to the east. And so that's what we're going to resolve. And so we'll have two tracks, and that will give us the ability to not only avoid these delays, but we'll put in passing lanes. So a train could go from one track to the other and back to the same track. And so we can run express trains that we can't run today. Today, we'd run follow-the-leader service out of Michigan City. I always like to show this slide. Here in Indiana, we have one rail line. Over in Illinois, there's 13 different spokes off of the main downtown spur. And so we really need to improve our rail infrastructure here in Indiana. We are very close to the city. We're 40 miles nautically. We're 50-some miles by rail. And so we really need to improve our access to the third-largest economy in the country and the eighth-largest in the world. So that's what this project is about. We want to decrease travel time. We're going to add more service. We're going to improve reliability that occurs when we can't pass each other in that single-track area. We're going to improve safety significantly, and we'll talk about that, about some of the changes we're doing here in Michigan City. With 14 more trains, you'll have more travel options, so that service opportunities will be better for people. And there's a lot of economic benefits that we project that are going to flow from the project. Michigan City right now is an hour and 41 minutes on average to Chicago. When we're finished with this project, we're going to be able to run express service in about 67 minutes. That's a significant improvement of time that puts us right in the square commute time to get to Chicago. It's going to make it possible for people who have not been able to ride and use our service to get jobs downtown because it just took too long to open up opportunities for people to get those higher-paying jobs in Chicago. This is a representation of the level of service before and after. Don't count the trains. It's not exact. It's just a representation. Our projection is, and when I say projection, all transit projects across the country that seek federal funds have to do computer modeling. Everybody has to use the same model, so it's apples-to-apples. The model says that with these improvements, we're going to move our ridership, we're basically going to double the South Shore's ridership. And when you add Westlake in, in about 20 years, we'll have, we'll go from 12,000 riders a day to 27,000 riders a day. I mentioned safety improvements. We are going to be, as part of this project, closing, I think it's 13 crossings here in Michigan City. There'll still be nine crossings on 11th Street in a one-mile area. In my experience in this industry, it is, it is an exception to the rule that you usually have one or two crossings at most in a one-square-foot mile, a one-mile area. What we're going to do for the remaining crossings that stay open, that we will significantly enhance safety by putting in gates, lights, and bells at each one of those crossings.
Do you mind if I turn the accent?
Yeah. And we've talked with the state's accident, we talked to them about the number of accidents. Last time we chatted with them, eight of the most, eight of the most dangerous crossings out of 100 crossings are here in Michigan City. So by improving safety, closing crossings, the safest thing you can do, but the next safest thing we can do is to improve the crossing protection with gates, lights, and bells. For the project, I mentioned four new bridges, high-level platforms here at 11th Street. So if you remember, show of hands, who was ridden out of Dune Park with the high-level platforms there? Are you familiar with it? We've got platforms that you go up to and just walk directly onto the train. It's much better for individuals with disabilities. It's going to allow us to have bike trains here in Michigan City as well. It also is going to improve the time to market. It takes us three to five minutes to board 150 people at Carroll Avenue through the small, narrow staircase. Everybody's got luggage. We board 400 people at a time in East Chicago in 30 seconds. So this is another way that we're going to reduce travel time. We're going to get out of the street on 10th Street on our own right-of-way. And at 11th Street, we're going to separate cars from the rail bed, and 11th Street will become one-way. The cost of the project is $420.3 billion. It started off at about $290. We've had a number of changes. The FTA has asked us to put more project contingency in. So the FTA always wants to make sure that if something happens, that you have enough money. So we've put in significantly more dollars into contingency, not necessarily what you're going to spend on the project, but they want you to show that you've got the money in case something goes wrong. In addition, when we first started this project, inflation was running at 1.4%. It's now running at 3.2%, and that's just the reality of the economy that we're in. So a combination of the inflationary market and FTA contingency, we're now at 420.3. Another major element to the project is what we're doing at the Miller Station in Gary. On the far right, you're coming down on US 12, and before you get into Lake Street, we're going to move, if Nicole, you want to point that out?
So here's 12, here's 20. This is the new connector road, if you know where the old Pancake House is and the Mosley Motel. 12 will connect at a signalized intersection to 20, and then essentially shuts down Highway 12 for our usage and design.
So what we're going to do, that is we're going to drop our tracks to the south on what was US 12, right there by the Miller Station in Gary. And that allows us to have enough straight track to build two high-level platforms in the Gary-Miller area. So we're doing this project in conjunction with INDOT. They're starting their project this year, and so we'll be starting ours after theirs is done. And that's where the station will be. Again, mentioned four jobs in Dunes, high-level platform, Dune Park. We're adding additional parking and a low-level platform, Beverly Shores. We're not impacting the station, but we'll have two new low-level platform areas. Again, here's 10th Street. I mentioned that we're following the alternative route that was jointly decided after public input in 2013. We'll be on our own right-of-way, so we'll be acquiring homes on the south side of 10th Street. Ken Fleetwood is here. I'm going to have him talk in a minute. Where's Ken? Ken's in the back. Ken is with Dean Longest and Neff. They're the real estate firm that we've hired to help us in the property acquisition. We follow the Federal Uniform Relocation Act. I'll talk about it in a minute. But that process, we'll have a workshop next week, and we'll talk more about that. So there'll still, there'll be two-way traffic on 10th Street and three-street closures. On 11th Street, we're taking, we're taking the tracks out of the street. Right now, we're embedded in the asphalt. It causes for significant wear and tear and extra maintenance costs. It also interferes with reliability. It has major impacts in the signal system when there's a lot of salt. Salt conducts electricity, and so it wreaks havoc on the signal system. And so we are going to be getting our tracks out of the ground and onto our rock ballast arrangement that you typically see on a railroad right-of-way. We'll have a new station at Franklin Street between Franklin and Pine and 10th and 11th Street. The station will incorporate the old facade from the original station into the structure, and there'll be a three-deck parking structure that's going to be built there. 11th Street will be one-way south, and there'll be 10th Street closure. I'm sorry. 10th Street, one-way east. 11th Street, thank you. And then you see the listing of the street closures on 10th or 11th Street. There's still nine streets that were made. There's this facade. We're going to be doing what's called a facadeectomy, which means you remove the facade, you restore the pieces that need to be repaired, and then when the structure is ready to be built, we'll then put the original structure back into the facility. That's an artist rendering from a couple of years ago. It's not, it was just something that we have had in file. It's not any to be used as a reflection of what it might look like, but we will incorporate the facade into the structure. You can see there, on the far right, there's the cars going one-way east on 11th Street. You have a center-bound platform, high-level, and then you have a platform on the north side that's also high-level. Just another view. And then we will be working with the city to design the cul-de-sacs for the streets that will be closed. That will be part of the ongoing process that we work with the city to move the project forward as we get towards 60% design in the summer and 100% design by the end of the year. Here's what I was mentioning, that Ken Fleetwood and his team will be hosting a meeting here next week for affected property owners, renters, business owners, to go over the protections of the Federal Uniform Relocation Act. This is, this is an act that's designed to be pro homeowner, pro renter. And so when we get through the slide presentation, I'll ask Ken to just give a brief overview of what's going to take place next week. He can also talk about the experience that we've been having in Hammond, Indiana, because we're building the Westlake project now, and we've been acquiring homes in the Westlake Quarter. We're acquiring 92 homes on Westlake and I think another 20 or so businesses and a number of other parcels. So that's going very well so far, and Ken can talk a little bit about that experience. We all know that we live in a very environmentally significant area of the country. We just got the National Park designation. We have the Indiana State Park there in Chesterton. The right-of-way of the railroad goes through, most of the right-of-way between here and Gary, Indiana, is going through some form of park. So we've worked very hard. A lot of credit goes to Nicole and her past leadership for Save the Dunes. We've worked very hard to live up to both the letter and the spirit of the law, and we got our environmental clearance in November of 2018. So we've been through that process, and we've made a lot of commitments, or we're going to follow those commitments, so that we're good stewards of the environment. One of the things that we want to talk about is that as a result of this project, through the closing of crossings and through the upgrade of the crossings to gates, lights, and bells, Michigan City is eligible to apply to the federal government for a quiet zone. And what that would mean is, is that both the freight railroad and the passenger railroad, I should step back. For anybody who doesn't understand it, we don't run freight. We own, we own the line. We run passenger service. South Shore Freight is a separate company. They run the freight. That's a completely separate business. It's owned by a private sector holding company. It's got five railroads across the country. They're good partners with us, but we don't run freight. If a quiet zone is approved, and the city would be the one to make the application, we would not be blowing our horn at every crossing as we go through town. And as you all know today, as we go through town, we're pretty much on the horn for about a four-mile area. So this improvement would allow the city to apply to the FR8 for a quiet zone designation. Under the agreement that we have, Michigan City is going to be responsible for the acquisition of the station block, and then NICTI is going to be responsible for the construction of the up-to-500-car parking facility and the construction of the station's facility itself and whatever remediation from, if there's any necessary, I think there might be on that block. And we're going, NICTI is going to be responsible for any demolition, if there's any building structures there, NICTI is going to step in and handle that aspect of the project. The parking structure, that's a parking structure. When Nicole gave me that today, I had no idea what she was looking at, but I'm told that's a parking structure, if anybody has vision and can imagine it. But essentially, it's a, it's a three-story structure that's going to be built today. So you'll have two floors, and then the top floor will be open air, but it will park on the top floor. And we're going to construct the buildings so that in the future, we could come back and add two additional stories for whatever purpose that that might be. The concept behind the structure is that, and it's being funded in large with a lot of money from the federal government, and they require that the use that they're providing the money for is protected. So we envisioned an agreement that we'll enter into with the city here in the coming months to operate the facility. Our commuters will have priority total about 2:00 in the afternoon, at which point in time that pretty much exhausts the folks that are going into Chicago. After 2:00 in the afternoon, it's open for the city to use for retail, restaurant, festivals on weekends. So there'll be a joint-use opportunity for this structure. It just has to have a priority from the morning until 2:00 PM in the afternoon. We're also, as you see, the pink area in the middle is where the station building will be. The green area is opportunity for some commercial, restaurant, retail opportunity.
Within the building.
Within the building. And that yellow strip is what Michigan City is reserving for potential development activity to pivot off of the opportunities for transitory development that will come hopefully with this project.
And that would be a separate building.
Yeah, it would be a completely separate building.
People have access to the parking garage, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So here's where we are in the process. As I mentioned, we completed the environmental aspect in 2018. We completed our project development and requested to enter engineering in June of 2019. And in February of this year, the FTA advanced the project into engineering along with five other projects across the country. I would mention that one of those other projects is our Westlake Quarter project. So the city of Indiana has two of the six projects across the country that have been advanced into this next phase. And the FTA describes being in engineering as their stamp of approval that they want to fund you. Now, there's some things that we need to do to get to a full funding grant agreement between now and then. We've got to finish final design. There's a couple of other reviews that we've got to do with the FTA, and I don't want to diminish it. But the FTA administrator called me personally, wanted me to know what, she said, "Mike, I want you to know that when we put you in engineering, that means we want to fund your project. You've demonstrated to us that we have a project we want to get behind." So that's a significant step for us. Final design in November, full funding grant agreement in June. Right after we get the full funding grant agreement, we'll turn to whatever contractor we've hired and give a notice to proceed and start construction. And we project start of revenue service, which means that we're using the new asset in March of '24. That is a date with scheduled contingency. We're driving to a much earlier date, fall of '23.
It's June of '23.
It's even June of '23. That we're going to start operations. And so we've got scheduled contingency in this project that the federal government requires, as well as dollar contingency. We hired a private sector economic analysis firm to do an indication of what the double-track project could mean from a private sector investment over 20 years. It's close to three-quarters of a billion dollars, $668 million in private sector investment. That is going to, it probably has already started. The developers who see the project advance through the process, once they get it, who understand the federal process, have an understanding that the project's coming. So there's probably already investment that's being made. The projection of jobs for the first 20 years, it's 439 jobs. From 20 to 30, it's 632 for a total of 1,071. I also want to mention, and for whatever reason they didn't ask us how many jobs we'd be adding here in Michigan City at Carroll Avenue, but it's another 32 jobs. Our average salary and benefits is worth about $85,000. I often hear the people say, "Well, what kind of jobs are you talking about?" Well, I can tell you what our jobs are. They're good-paying jobs with a long-term career opportunity. This project, not only does it give us the opportunity to hire 32 more people, it solidifies the railroad and it solidifies the positions that we have here in the community. And we've got 344 positions at our facility in Michigan City. And one of the things that was important to the council, we negotiated with them, was a commitment that NICTI stayed at Carroll Avenue for at least the next two decades. So we kept those jobs there, and we agreed to do that. There had been discussion about moving out of Michigan City to a different site farther to the west. We've made the commitment for at least the next two decades, if not longer, to stay here in Michigan City. Why is it important to get to Chicago faster or get more people to, from northwest Indiana to Chicago? We've done a study, and on average, this doesn't hold for every position, but on average, you get a 37% wage increase if you have the same job in Chicago than you do here in the region. So our folks here can get on the train, they can go to Chicago, they get the higher income, they bring it back here to the community, they spend it here in the community, and has a good economic benefit. Our average household income of a South Shore Line rider is $88,000 per year. That's our average income for a rider. So the more riders we can get on the train, the more economic benefit they can bring back to northwest Indiana, specifically here for Michigan City. I don't know if we have a slide on that. We do. That was it. Go back. Year one, we go from about 350 riders to 496 riders, and year 20, we've got 1,000 new riders. 1,000 new riders at $88,000 a year of current household income. It's pretty significant for Michigan City alone. So over the first 30 years, this is a recap of the slide, it's 1,000 jobs, $670 million of private investment. We also, we also did a calculation of what that generates to governmental bodies who have to provide services to. We may have more people coming to the area. We don't want to overtax or overburden the government services. There's significant additional revenues that will be coming in to our state, city, county, and state of Indiana. Until somebody else wins a championship, I'm flying the Cubs, W.
Mike, do you want to add about the, or I can add it. Next Tuesday, here in this room, is the open house that BLN will talk about, I'm sure, too, but for the affected property owners. So 1:00 to 6:00 PM next Tuesday is the Michigan City location. The following day, there's one in Gary in case people can't make it here. That information's on our website, or you can ask me after the meeting. And then in June, I'm sure people are eager to see what the station is going to look like and get more details on the parking and closures, timing, phasing, et cetera. We'll be at 60% design here soon, and the June 10th workshop will be held also in this room from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, where we'll have all of our engineers here with us. We can delve into the plan on your block and your street in further detail, and you can also react to some of the initial concepts for the station.
Thanks, Nicole. And maybe this is a good time, Ken, if you wouldn't mind, Ken's going to be hosting the workshop next week. Just give a brief discussion of what people should expect of the process, how it's going to flow, and what they should expect from BLN, timing, all that kind of good stuff.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. As Mike said, the workshops will be next week. Letters went out to all of the impacted owners about two weeks ago, inviting them to the workshops. Tuesday is the Michigan City workshop, and Wednesday is the workshop at Gary. That's our, that's the kickoff of the land acquisition phase. So that's where we bring everyone in, allow them to meet with our staff, the appraisers, buyers, relocation agents, so that they will be familiar with the folks they'll be working with throughout 2020 as land is acquired. So that's the kickoff. We, as has been said, we follow the Uniform Act. That's the federal act of 1970, which governs the process that we have to follow to buy the land. And that is the same process that all land is acquired in the state of Indiana that has federal money in the project, same as any other project in the United States. If there's federal money in it, they will follow our process, and it's about transparency. Every landowner will be offered the opportunity to meet with the appraiser that will come after the open house. And that way, they can meet with the appraiser, walk the property, they can show them, "This is what I have," and have access to that appraiser. There's also the view appraisal done on each property. And then, once those documents are completed, NICTI will sign off and recommend that as just compensation to the owner, and that will be the basis of the offer to purchase property. So, once the offer's made, each landowner will meet individually with a buyer. And then there's a second level to this. If you're being relocated as a part of the project, each person will meet with a relocation agent individually as well. So for someone that's being relocated, there are really two offers. There's one offer that is for the real estate itself, and there's a second offer, that's the relocation package. So next week's our opportunity to sit down with owners and say, "This is what's going to happen, and here's the timeframe throughout 2020," most of which of that work will happen between now and fall. So there's a sister project to this one that's called the Westlake. We've been working on that project. That started in 2019. We followed the same process, which is under the Uniform Act, and I'm really proud to say that I think acceptance rate on offers has been over 90%. So the project's going well, and we're excited to be here in Michigan City.
Thanks, Ken.
Could you speak just a little to renters? If you don't own, you cover a lot of the home, but how about relocation renters?
Now, tenants are handled the same way. They are given a relocation package as well to find a new place to live. I have a relocation agent here with me tonight, Joe Remoski. I don't know if you'd want to add to that.
Yeah. So, here, I'll come up. So tenants, so every different type of relocation has slightly different set of benefits. Tenants are offered, they can, we'll either pay them to move themselves, or we can hire a professional mover to move them. And then they have the option of what we call a rental assistance payment or a down-payment assistance payment. So we'll pay them, you know, assistance to rent a place if it costs more to do that, to rent a new place. And then the government wants to encourage homeownership, so there's actually the option for tenants to apply that money instead of renting a place to purchase, to use as a down payment to purchase a home.
So just really quick. So this information about the property acquisition and relocation stuff, this is what you're going to have the more in-depth workshop about next week, right? Can you give the exact... Can you give the exact date and time of that so everyone knows?
March 3rd, 1 to 6 PM in this room.
This room, yeah.
And so there, there's going to be, they're going to have a general meeting next week. Then they're going to have individual meetings. So the idea was the, give everybody an opportunity to come together. They'll give an overall presentation, but then they're not just going to cut and run. They're going to then have individual meetings with all of the, uh, property owners or renters, depending upon their circumstances.
That's their problem.
At their property, yeah.
Were the letters sent certified and were the renters, how were the renters notified? I mean, did you knock on the door? How did you know that you got everybody?
All the letters were sent to the, uh, address of record for the property.
Then not necessarily a renter might not, we don't know if the owner, we're assuming they got it.
We hope that the owners would notify the renters, but.
Okay.
If, if they were missed for the open house, they'll certainly be contacted during the process.
And just to clarify, it's a, you have to reside as a tenant, renter, you'd have to, um, be there 90 days minimum, right? In order to get the relocation benefit, generally speaking.
Yeah, there's a difference in where the money comes from. You can, you can still receive benefits if you've been there for less than 90 days. But from the government, it comes from a different pot of money.
Okay, good.
Are the land acquisitions that's going to be open till October are going to be limited to property owners and renters?
For the open houses? We've invited the, uh, affected owners, but occasionally we'll have folks that are not within the acquisition area come in. That's fine. They can come in, but the information that we have is really for someone who's having property purchase.
Understand they won't be engaged in that. They will be able to watch the process?
They can come in, sure. Do you have anything more to add?
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. And what, Snick, you got, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Michael, just one thing that you didn't talk about. La Porte County in Michigan City gained a lot. All the construction union jobs that this project has gone great right here in La Porte County, several awards.
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned the, um, I mentioned the long-term jobs that are created. But this, the value of the construction of this job of that $420 million is probably close to $300 million. And a significant portion of that is concentrated here in Michigan City. So, um, there's, there's going to be a whole lot of work that's going to take place and a lot of jobs, um, that are going to take place in the, starting in, you know, June of next year for two-year, at least a two-year period.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't tie into future development?
Right, right, that's, that's completely separate. And we didn't, there isn't, we, I think the RDA and the strategic plan does have a number that references, but I didn't bring it tonight. Thank you for bringing that up, Joe.
Thank you.
How much more do you have to add before you want us to start questions?
Um, I, I think we're ready to open it up for, for questions if people.
Okay, so first I would like to, uh, open it up for anyone on the council that has any questions. And then we will go to the mayor and then we'll open it up to the rest of the public. So is there anyone, uh, any council members want to? Yep.
Good evening, Paul Priswalinski, 1716 Washington Street, Consulman for the Second Ward. This evening, I would like to ask some detailed questions of NICTA. First question I would like to ask, has there ever been a formal traffic study done of, uh, all the major interceptors that are going to be left open? And who has it?
Yes, if you go to our website, which is www.doubletrick-nwi.com, there's a section that says docs, short for documents. And if you click there, you'll see the environmental assessment. And one of the appendices says, uh, traffic and parking memorandum. It's about 300 pages. It's all the required, um, traffic analyses for the entirety of the project. And there's a whole section on Michigan City and every change to every single intersection and closure that's, that's documented per the process.
Traffic flows on it?
Yeah, the appendix has all the details, but you'll see the summary of like the conclusions, the way that they do it. They have level A, level B, level C, and they determine what's warranted in terms of a change of anything. Um, and so you'll see that report, uh, outlining, if you can't find.
So does it, um, I got a second, a follow-up question. Does it show an analogy of what's going to happen with the street, uh, flow from, after everything's done?
It, it has conclusions about that, yes.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, my second question is, the, uh, has there been a cost estimate worked through the, uh, process to show the cost, the future cost to the city of Michigan City for this agreement that was entered into? And concerning the responsibility to take care of the station, to, uh, build the additional parking spaces at the station and, uh, all the caveats that are associated with this. Um, the, uh, Michigan City being responsible for, uh, all the roadwork on the street closings, all appropriate safety devices, landscaping and associated cost. And that, it says that Michigan City and NICTA will work together, but the cost is on the city of Michigan City. Also, the, uh, is there, okay, that'd be the third question would be. Has there been any thought to, uh, I know that you, you guys want to build a, uh, 900-foot-long, uh, loading ramp, platform ramp? And you're going to close, close down one of the main interceptors into the north end of Michigan City, Pine Street? That after all this money that was spent on the north end, now we're limiting traffic? Can there, uh, are you planning on running eight-car trains all the time, uh, through Michigan City?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, so then you're saying that.
We, we, your answer is, do we need an eight-car platform?
I didn't say that.
That's why we need the length.
You already have, there's no adjustments that can be made on this agreement to keep that Pine Street open. You're going to have 300 feet or 400 feet on 11th Street already. And, you know, I, I understand that you did your, you did your traffic study, but I think that for Michigan City's sake and a downtown's sake is that these things should be left open. And that you have certain loading areas, if you want to load disabilities in, in people to get them up on that ramp, because they're still going to have to have an entrance, entryway to get up to it, that there's accommodations made and, and you have them loading in the front, front cars.
Yeah, um, we studied this very carefully. The station is going to be in proximity to the platform and the platform is going to be adjacent there. And so by its very nature, where we are going to drive the, the people to the parking facility and to the station, the platform's going to be adjacent to it. So it's really not practical, um, to shift it at all. And when we shift, if we try to shift it, now you're shifting into that curve farther south. So we're constrained when you get to, if you push it farther south, you just, which you're suggesting is push the platform farther to, I'm sorry, south, to the, to keep doing it, to the east. We're in that curve there, it's Cedar and Lafayette.
Okay.
So the only way to do it would be shorten the platform and we need that platform space to accommodate the number of riders we're going to have.
Well, the, uh, I think the big question for me is the associated cost for this agreement besides the money that was already put up. Do you have those figures worked out already?
Uh, no, I don't have the ultimate figures.
You didn't?
That, you know, the, 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 the figures that we have of the, of the cost responsibilities that we've agreed to in this agreement. So that's what we've gone through and have detailed estimates on, but we don't have detailed estimates. If someone else has a, like, for instance, in, in Gary, Indot's responsible for the relocation of US 12 over to US 20. I, I don't have an estimate, Consulman, as to what that would cost, because it's not, it's not a project that I'm, um, responsible for.
Okay, well, um, item, uh, O on page six, it says that the, uh, NICTA will investigate the feasibility of installing quiet zone technology and disclose this and discuss it with the city, resulting in that investigation, allowing the city to pay the additional cost of this installation. Have, have those costs been disclosed with the city yet?
We've done some preliminary, uh, work to determine whether or not a quiet zone, and we paid for an engineering study to see if we could qualify for an engineer, for a quiet zone. The initial answer is it does appear to be positive. I don't know ultimately what the FRA is going to require, because the city has to make an application for the quiet zone. And then the, the FRA could come back, it's the Federal Railroad Administration, they're the ones who govern it. And they're going to tell you what additional supplemental safety measures you might need on the street side in order to make that happen. And some examples are, um, where you could put a median in between the street as you get to, think about WABASHs, they come south towards our tracks. If you had, I think there's a median there already. That may qualify from the FRA's viewpoint as separating the traffic. So what they try to avoid is that people could go around the gates and do, and, you know, uh, fishtail around the gates to avoid grade crossing protection. So if you already have those there, they might say that's sufficient. In an area where they don't, they might ask for something else. So I don't know, we don't know until we apply as to what that might be.
There's no, excuse me, there's no, you haven't done any preliminary costs on that? It's all left up to the city, you're saying?
The, the decision to make the application for a quiet zone is the city's. So the city has to make that decision first. We investigated as to whether or not it would be feasible and we've done what we can to support that. And if the city wanted it, just like any other city, we would support their application. But if there's going to be changes to the road structure, and I don't, I don't know what, we're not there yet. We don't know what they're going to ask. But if there were changes, then, then the city would, um, be responsible for those. So I can't predict what the FRA is going to ask.
Okay, um, then can you predict the, uh, additional, uh, expansion of the parking facility when it reaches the set capacity? The, the additional two floors that you talked about today?
Um, you know, roughly, um, a, the structure we're projecting at $10 million today in today's dollars. If we were to be at that position, um, 12 years, 15 years from now, where we're so fortunate that our ridership has doubled to the point where, where we need to, to, we've utilized every space. That means this project has hit a home run and, and it's benefiting the city and everyone else. To go up another 10 floors, it's, it's 10 million due to, so it could be another 10 million. But I don't know, I can't predict what it's going to be.
I understand, I'm just looking at the feasibility. You talked about two additional floors on the structure.
Right.
The initial structure, how it was built, not 10 stories. But I don't think we should go overboard.
He said 10, he meant 10.
Michael.
Oh, I meant, I meant 10, I meant 10 million, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I'm bringing these points up so that the general public knows and the city council knows that there's a lot of additional costs in this project to the city of Michigan City. And that these factors need to be brought out in the public view to know our long-term financial responsibility to this project. And at this, at this point in time, I think that a preliminary should already be worked up. So with me asking the questions that I did, I'm a little out of gas to say that we don't know at this time, or there's no preliminaries.
So you asked me this question three years ago. So we, we talked about this in public sessions three years ago. I'll refresh your recollection. We had the same exact, so, so this was discussed. It was done in open forum multiple times. You were there, we've had the same discussion, we're having it again. So I respectfully, um, will, we're not going to price something that, that could occur 20 years from now. So I can't, like, it would be, um, it would be a number that would have no meaning to you or to me, because we don't know what the conditions will be at the time. And that's the best answer, I'm not trying to evade your answer. I'm telling you what it costs today to build, um, when we project it's going to cost today to build the current structure. I can't tell you what it's going to cost, because I don't know when it's going to be. It might only be one floor that we need, and so who knows?
Mr. Nolan, I, uh, I can understand your, your particular answer, but the preliminaries, you can also do inflationary costs to it.
But to what?
Let me finish, please, is that the point is being that people need to know the long-term fiscally, uh, being fiscally involved with this project, that it wasn't just the money that was put upfront. There's a long-term commitment to this project by the city itself. And I think that, and you're correct, I probably did ask some of them questions. But also, there's been three years since those meetings. And I would think that the administration, not this administration, the prior administration, somebody should have been working on this and getting these figures preliminary put together with the inflationary costs put in there, because those are all calculated factors. So we can look out five years in, in the future and 10 years in the future. But also I believe that with our, uh, the city's responsibility, I think that the, uh, South Shore needs to make a bigger commitment to the city. And number one is that on the permanent placement of the facility at the, uh, repair shop, stay in Michigan City for 100 years. And that also, that you guys receive federal and state money and you also receive a substantial contribution in fiscal, long-term commitment by the city. Is that I think that you guys, at this point, need to change your policy on hiring people and that you allow family members to be hired at the South Shore. And I make that statement for this reason. I work for a multi-international company and they make a priority of hiring family members. That's stated on the application. And with that being said, uh, I think that the council members that are here and, uh, mayor, that we have some, uh, a lot of work in, in front of us on looking at the financial responsibility to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would just add to, um, Consulman's, um, request about the facility. We, we looked out what, two decades. We have no plans two decades in a day or two decades in a week or two decades in five years or two, we, we made a 20-year commitment. And as part of that, we're, we're committed to expanding our yard. to expanding our yard in Michigan City. So we're investing money in Michigan City. We're investing money in that facility. We have no intent to we it would take a lot of money to build another facility somewhere else. We have no plans to leave Michigan City. The second thing I'm gonna add about family preference hiring, railroads historically were not diverse, and there were there were written into union contracts rights of of employment to relatives. We have worked really hard to diversify our our employment, and we think it's good policy not to to have a anti nepotism policy. It's worked out well for us, and I'm I'm not gonna advocate we change it. We've been very successful in bringing in a whole new workforce, and so we're gonna we're gonna continue to follow that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah. Did anyone hear me?
Yeah.
In the back? Okay. My name's Don Przewlinski, City Councilman in large on Michigan City City Council. And I have some questions and comments. And I know we've talked about these in the past, Mr. Nolan, so I just want people to know exactly what you and I have talked about. And the first one is the speed of the train leaving Michigan City. And I know that I specifically, when we spoke, that I brought up the fact at like Wabash Street, how fast the train will be going. And by the time that train hits Ohio Street, how fast the train will be going. So could you tell? Could you respond to that?
The in large part, our speed through Michigan City is going to be regulated by civil restrictions based upon curves and based upon the fact that we've got a station stop at 11th Street. So trains pulling out or trains pulling into 11th Street are gonna be slowing down for the station. Trains pulling out of 11th Street, by the time they hit Wabash is two blocks away. So roughly, the train probably could be up to about 30 miles an hour by then.
Okay. And by the time it hits Ohio Street and Tennessee Street, which will be the west side of Michigan City?
The maximum speed we can we can achieve from a civil standpoint is around 45 miles per hour. There's very few places in the city we can hit that. It's mostly 40 miles an hour.
Okay. So by the time the train hits Ohio Street, it's gonna be going 45 miles an hour.
I have to because we're coming right there to the Amtrak. And so we've the maximum speed we're gonna achieve through Amtrak is like 30.
It's around 30.
35.
Okay.
So if we're not gonna be we're not gonna be you're not gonna speed up to 45 only to a block later, hit the brakes and go down. So it's probably be around 40.
Okay. So and then my opinion at that time, that I thought that that was too fast for a train going 40 miles an hour down past Ohio Street in a residential neighborhood, and then headed out west through another residential neighborhood, although it'll be behind the houses, it's still gonna be some residential neighborhood. So I would like the South Shore to take a look at that and try to cut that speed down to make it safe. And I know that you're gonna have fences, correct, on both the north side and the south side of the tracks?
There's on this on 11th Street, there's a barrier between the track and the roadway and the fence on the north side. Brandon, do you know how far we extend to the west with the fencing? On we're totally separate. So I think it goes basically.
Yeah, on the north side of the track is all fence. I believe all the shared.
On the south side, I believe what we agreed to do is to put some kind of landscaping verming up to discourage. But we're not fencing the south side. There's nothing behind the south side. And so for the most part.
On the north side.
On the north side, we're fencing. On the south side, it'll be typical railroad right away. So we'll put some verming in in that area or or some trees to plant. But we never agreed to put fencing on both sides on 10th Street.
No, I didn't say to on 11th Street.
On 11th Street, so on 11th Street, you'll have the barrier effectively between the roadway and the railroad tracks.
Yeah, on the south side.
And on the north side, we'll have fencing.
Okay.
We're gonna we're gonna we're gonna run the railroad. Our first priority is always safety, and we're gonna run it pursuant to Federal Railroad Administration requirements. And and that's gonna govern the operation of the railroad.
Okay. And this verming, since you mentioned verming, because I always had in my mind that there was gonna be fencing on both sides. This verming on the south side now, it could be trees, it could be shrubs, correct?
Yes.
All right, trees, shrubs, or concrete barricade, whatever, you know, probably it'll be maybe the safest and hopefully not the cheapest way to go, but the safest way to go. Is I still have a concern that, you know, there may be children out in the street, riding bikes, what have you, elderly folks possibly crossing the the street. And now we're gonna have a train coming down the street at 40 miles an hour. And, you know, what's the barricade? Well, you have a four foot bush over here that's acting as a safety barricade. And to me, and to me, and I hope that the folks that live in those neighborhoods find that totally unacceptable. Because that is not that is not.
My response to them would be today, I don't find I think it's a significant safety enhancement to get out of to have trains intermixed today in the middle of the roadway. I think it's a significant safety enhancement to get them out of the roadway where there's kids playing, where there's people riding their bikes back and forth, and we got trains going down the middle of town. I I think that what we're doing is significantly safer than the current condition. And I'm not saying the current condition is unsafe. I just this is a safety enhancement, what we're doing.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that point up.
Sure.
Okay. The next item, and the way it was first described is at the crossings, however many crossings are gonna be left open, that the crossings were not gonna be street level, they were gonna be.
Raised.
Raised. Okay. So for for the people in the audience, what that means is that right now at 11th Street, that crossing is street level. What you'll have, and I know that you and I talked, and your engineer said that they could do away with that, and that they would make them street level. Okay. And I just want to make sure that that happens and that it's on record. Otherwise, at every crossing that we're gonna have in Michigan City on 11th Street, you're gonna have a big hump going up and over the track. So it'll it'll wind up. That's what you that's what we would have if we do not have street level crossings. So I just wanna.
Yeah, and it was.
Hold your word to that, that that's the way it's gonna be.
It was all it was never our in our plans to have the type of hump that you're talking about. But you and I did verify that, that crossings will be level like they are over by, it's an Ames Field.
Right.
Where you cross the tracks.
Yeah, the city old track.
That will be the type of crossing that our citizens and our and our customers will experience.
All right. I just want to make sure that that's the direction we're gonna go. And and Mike, one of the comments that you made is that eight, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in your presentation, you said eight out of the 100 most dangerous crossings.
In the state of Indiana.
In the state of Indiana.
Where on we're in in this project limit.
All right. Are they in Michigan City?
Yes.
In this part of Michigan City, 10 and 11.
Okay.
Yeah.
Based on frequency of accidents?
Yeah. Okay. So let me just finish my comment. So if we have, in this city, if we have in your in your railroad is responsible for these crossings, I guess.
Well, they're street crossings.
Okay, street. Okay, all right.
There's no there's no crossing. Today, what we have is is a cross box or a stop sign.
Okay. So where I'm going with this is if there if we have eight out of the 100 most dangerous crossings in the state of Indiana, and they're right here on 11th Street in our downtown area, then why can't we work together now to do something instead of waiting another two years to try to alleviate this problem before something else happens or somebody else gets hurt at one of these crossings?
I I.
I mean, I would think that the railroad would be dedicated to that to try to get something resolved. So I'd like to see the railroad and the city get together and try to get some kind of resolution there.
All in favor of that.
All right. And then we'll go to, let's see, oh, the freight.
Yeah.
You said that, and I understand the South Shore doesn't, NICTA doesn't run the freight. The South Shore runs the freight, and they're two separate entities.
Right.
All right. One of my concerns, a major concern is, is South Shore Freight has never been involved with this double tracking discussion. They've never came to any meetings that I'm aware.
Okay. No, I don't need to have.
Okay. Once this double track is put in, so what do they do then if they want to increase their freight traffic going down 11th Street through the middle of town? Do they need to say anything to NICTA? Or do they say, we want to rent, pay you more rent or whatever the agreement is, that we want to bring more freight through Michigan City?
There's nothing limiting South Shore Freight's ability to run more freight service today. I'm not aware that South Shore Freight has ever declined a customer opportunity because there wasn't capacity. When I went to them to suggest that they could kick in on on the project, that's the answer that I got from them, which was basically, we have plenty of capacity. They're not a scheduled railroad for the most part. They can run at all hours of the day and all hours of the night, and there's all kinds of room to run more freight service, which they have the right to do by law. So the the short answer is, is that what this project will do, it'll make it, I think, a more efficient operation for them. But it's not going to grow a customer base for them. They're growing their customer base and they could have grown it before we do the project, and they'll be able to grow it after in the same way.
I'm gonna add on to that. Well, there'll be instances where they'll have more than like eight cars like you guys would have.
Oh, sure. They they can run.
A whole freight train.
They can run unit coal. They run unit coal trains today into the power plants here. So I I'm not the expert in their their operation, nor how many what they generally run through town. A large part of their operation is west of Michigan City. But, you know, there's there's nothing that.
Right. There's there's nothing that you can do about it. If they want to put more freight trains on, they can legally do it.
They can do it.
Okay. And they don't have to say a word to NICTA. Inside coordination.
They, you know, they we dispatch the railroad, and so we we control the movements. So they can't just put a freight train out there in the middle of our rush hour.
No, I understand that. Yeah. They'll talk to you to say, this is what we want to do. And you guys will say, okay, we're gonna work with that.
The dispatchers know the time, frequency, and length of the trains.
All right. So my point is that there could be a great possibility for increased freight traffic coming down 11th Street at this point.
Well, I I all I would say is reared the point is that if we don't do the double track project, and if South Shore Freight finds some customers that are east of Michigan City that they can serve, they can do that today, and they have the capacity to do it. So I just don't think this project is going to be what unlocks their ability to expand the railroad out east.
And I'm not bringing this up to be negative towards this project. I'm just bringing it up as a fact of reality of what of what could possibly happen.
And I've heard people say this project's not about passengers, it's about freight, and it's just it's just not the case.
Okay. And my last question, and that zones in on the parking garage, because to me, that's gonna be probably the last, not the last, but it'll be the major expense coming up here for the city. And I think that we need to get into an operating preliminary discussions ASAP, so that the city knows how we need to budget our financing going forward here for the next three years. Because it's 2024, correct?
The earliest could be summer of 23.
Okay, 2023. And that's only, you know, what, a couple of years around the corner?
Three and a half years in.
Yeah, two and a half years in. So I think we need to start that discussion sooner than later.
We agree.
So that the council and the mayor can start working together on what we need to get our financing ducks in a row to see how we're gonna do this.
I agree.
We have a standing bi weekly, and I know the mayor was at one recently, but we have a standing bi weekly that now Skylar is coordinating with us. But any so that's already on the books. If they ever want to take over the agenda for that kind of discussion, we're more than happy to do it.
We we.
Or we could set a separate.
We owe the city, and we volunteered to 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 get some examples of operating and maintenance agreements that exist over on the Metro side, where Metro's got parking facilities in suburban areas. It doesn't mean that we have to adopt any of it, but I just thought that'd be a good place to take a look at a template, and we'll get those to you shortly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council members? Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
Can you open the mic? Wayne Perry, Mayor of Michigan City. My first question, Mr. Nolan, is when the double tracks are in, they're done and operational, are we gonna have positive train control through the entire limits of Michigan City?
Yes, we will. And for those who don't know, Positive Train Control is a computer based system operates off of satellites. So that if an engineer fails to heed a safety warning, like a speed restriction or a signal coming up, the computer system will shut the train down. It has to be in place by December 31st of this year, or else you can't run on January 1st of next year. So our system is already in place. It's in testing. We are well on our way to have all of our trains equipped and running and in service well in advance of the end of the year.
Thank you. I'm one of the individuals who feels that we are gonna have substantially more freight going through Michigan City, and I'm very concerned about that. Your predecessor, Mr. Hannes, at every I've been, please forgive me, I've been out of the loop for four years. At every event I was at, I asked for an amount that freight was going to increase. I never got an amount. Can you give us an idea what's gonna happen with freight? I'm sure it's not gonna decrease, but I have to believe that they're your sister company that that we're gonna see more freight.
I can tell you Todd Bjornstedt's the the new president of the of the line. You might have been working with Andrew Fox.
Yes.
At the time.
Yes.
He was the Andrews Andrew was Todd's previous. He was the previous president of South Shore. Todd is actively working to 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 maintain his business. You know, they lost one of their largest customers, which was the Bailey Generation State Plant and next to Arseler. And for those of us who, you know, like, it's great that the plant, the Nipco plant's coming off the lakefront, but that's also a loss of at some point, it's gonna be a loss of one of their major customers. So I think I think Todd's scrambling for business. So he's trying to stay at, you know, at where he was. He's not indicated that he has significant new customers out east. His footprint for most of his operation is west of Michigan City. And so he's not giving me any projection that says they're going to be expanding to the east. And that would be something we'd want to know because if he's running more trains, he's gonna be running through Carroll. And so we'd want to know that. We've not heard that. So.
Okay. Well, I've always been curious about that because it seems that we're the only ones, the people in Michigan City, that don't know what's going on. Because I've seen South Shore locomotives running on Amtrak up north, on the 11th Street rails, and on CSX down south. So apparently, they 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 run everywhere. My last question, I've always been concerned and interested about the public safety of people in Michigan City. Now, as mayor, I feel it's my duty to protect that and preserve that public safety. On the basis of that, I would ask you to reconsider the permanent closure of Carol Ave, where the tracks cross Carol Ave. Several years ago, we had a five year old girl that was hit by a car and in the Tower Park area. And I've since then, I've I've taken a real hard look at that area. And I've many times seen cars going north on Carol Ave that they'll they'll see the signals and they'll jump over on that street to Risky to go over the overpass. And once Carol Ave is closed, I don't think the traffic flow in that area's really been looked at extensively because it's gonna put a tremendous load on Risky and the only other street. other street that is in condition to carry a lot of traffic is all the way back west at Vale. So, there are other streets, but Woodland Ave is not ready north of the tracks. So, I'm really concerned about that crossing, and I would ask you to reconsider the closure of it.
And so, a little background, that mayor, as to what led to that, and to Councilman Paul Priselinski's request that we consider staying in the community longer than 20 years. What we negotiated with the council four years ago, when that request was made to stay, give a commitment to stay, right now, as you know, our yard backs up to Trail Creek. We cannot fit another railcar in that yard. And so, for us to stay and to cement that opportunity, and if we're gonna expand this railroad, we need to store more railcars. And the only place we would be able to do it is potentially, there's a little triangle industrial parcel that's been open for years, possibly, we could expand our rail yard and have a rail yard, a lower yard and an upper yard. But to do that, we'd have to close Carroll. And so, in return for the commitment that we would say, we'll stay here for at least 20 more years, the city agreed that we could close Carroll Avenue and create the opportunity for that rail yard. So, that was the exchange, if you will, of the discussion, that negotiation. We knew that at the time, we'd have to give you a lot of lead time before we did it. We'll need a lot of lead time before we do it, and so we'll have to look at improving those arterial streets that are to the, is that north of Carol Ave, I guess? I was losing my...
Yes.
You know, to make sure that they can handle the appropriate, I think they're one-way pairs now.
Well, they actually have to be improved north of the boulevard.
Okay.
Carol Ave's far enough north that there's improvement that would be needed between tracks and the boulevard.
If we get to the point, before we would do anything, we'll let you know, and so we can have those discussions on how to do it in a manner that's safe, and also solidifies the opportunity to keep the rail yard there for the coming decades.
For the public's information and mine, the lower rail yard that you're talking about, I think, is on Carnwick Road extended to the south, just before it goes underneath that trestle?
No, so basically, what we would, there's a little triangular parcel that's just to the south of Carroll Avenue by our station, and then there's Carroll Avenue, and then there's an industrial facility and a vacant parking lot that's for sale right now. And we would look at that area as being the place where we would store the railcars. I'll send you a map, so you can see the concept.
So, that work that's going on in the area that I described is not...
It's not ours.
It's not yours?
No, it could be South Shore Freight.
I'd do that CSX, I'd be doing that bridge.
CSX, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any public comments, any questions for Mr. Nolan?
Kathy Stransky, 223 East Barker Ave here in Michigan City. I don't know that you were in on all this years ago, but we almost lost our building, our shops over there on Carroll Ave. They were gonna move them to South Bend, and the only thing that kept them from doing it was the fact they bought double-decker trains, and there was low trestles in St. Joe County. So, that's why we really want more than a 20-year commitment from the South Shore. South Bend is putting nothing in this pot, and we are putting much. Thank you.
Thank you. South Bend, just so you know, South Bend's putting in, the four counties who funded this, each agreed to put in 18.25 million. So, St. Joe County originally stepped up and said, they put it in, they just struck a deal with the city about three or four months ago. So, South Bend put in 9.1, and St. Joe County did put in 9.1, and I wasn't here at the time of those discussions. But what I was told was not that they were gonna move the maintenance facility to South Bend, although that might have been considered. I was told that it was gonna go west, and we were gonna truncate the railroad in Porter County. I don't, so there was a lot of discussion and a lot of rumors that were floating around. We can run the double deckers to South Bend. So, that may have been something that somebody said, and we couldn't. The reason we don't often do it today is that the overhead wire that we have out towards the eastern end of the railroad is about that thick. It's from 1919, and the wire that we have today on the railroad is that thick. So, we've been restringing the wire from where we get on Metro at Kensington, and we remove it eastbound, and we have 12 more miles of wire to fix till we get to South Bend. That's the only reason that we don't generally run those cars out that direction. But we have no plans to leave this community. We're gonna invest in the Carroll Avenue facility. We just built a $3 million addition two years ago. We're putting on a brand-new roof that's gonna cost several million dollars. We're putting in money in the facility, and so it's hard to predict longer than 20 years. We've given, that's not that, like I said, we're not leaving after 20 years, but we've put a long-term commitment in this, and if we build the lower extension rail yard, we'll be putting millions more in. I mean, so there's no intent to say that it's only 20 years, and then we're done.
I just wanted to add to that, the split we're talking about for South Bend and St. Joe putting money in the project, there's actually no improvements whatsoever happening in that county, but they understood the value of the project to their community as well. So, they actually, nothing physically happening in that...
I have a home that's right on the South Bend, I mean, St. Joe, LaPorte County property. So, I see the work going on on the Rowan Prairie side, and of course, like, right now, there's nothing happening over in South Bend side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Christine Vanderburg, 1312 West 10th Street, Michigan City. I'm also a code enforcement officer for Michigan City as well. The rendition up there is actually, my house is right there.
It was flipped upside down, technically.
And, well, technically, the houses, your rendition should show track from the opposite side.
Yeah, it was backwards.
Okay. So, with that being said, Christine, I've lived there for almost six years now. Freight comes through generally Fridays and Sundays. You can tell by bad axles, squeaky noises, stuff like that. You hear it hit Sheridan Avenue and home run that way. My background, my father worked on a railroad. He put in railroad tracks for a living. He headed the CTA pro tracks downtown Chicago, Dan Ryan. And railroad and rail is weighted by the yard, the length. So, with that being said, what weight rail are we using? Because the heavier the rail by the yard means the more freight and the faster the freight comes through, or the rail comes through, or the South Shore comes through. Okay, and then on top of that, you know, with that concern, you're displacing people on 10th Street, but I really feel that, you guys, it's more of an agenda of getting more freight through.
So, to answer your first question, and you've done your homework, we do, we use 115-pound rail everywhere we go. So, that's, there's no plan to increase that to 136-pound rail for a number of reasons. 136-pound rail's not necessary, it's way more expensive, and South Shore Freight is able to run on our system at 115-pound rail, and it works for the commuter cars. So, we're not, we're not increasing the weight capacity of the rail through this project. I can only tell you what I've been told and what I've seen, and I know that we have capacity for South Shore Freight today to run more traffic, and that they've never come to us and said, if only you could give us some slots, we could have another customer, or 10 more customers. So, it just tells me, because they're motivated by increasing their business, if they could, they would. So, if they're able to increase freight traffic, it's gonna be because they found a new customer, but it's not because they, we enhanced the footprint of the rail system.
I think they need to come to a meeting and explain themselves on what their intentions are for this track, because, yes, it's 115-weight. I've walked the track, I've notated, and, you know, you're saying that the wires are 100 years old. So, this track is 100 years old, and it comes from the mills in the area, US Steel, or whatever existing mills were and stuff like that. There's older track out there. I worked in a rail yard, I know. There's track that's over 100 years old. All depends on the head and how it rolls down, down the line. But with that being said, doesn't mean that the rail traffic is gonna slow down, it means it's just gonna break the cars apart and use less weight going down that rail. And that's what we get right now. When Friday and Sundays come along, we get maybe 20 cars, maybe we get 40 cars. But just because you're not changing the rail size or the weight, doesn't mean we're not gonna see an increase of traffic. That's my point. And they really need to come to these meetings, because they're a big part of that track. I mean, it's, you can tell when those freighters go through town. My other question is, as a code enforcement officer, this project's been, I haven't lived in this county that long, and I've been hearing about this project, and unfortunately, our neighbors have been dealing with blighted houses, because, and it's hard as a code enforcement officer to make somebody fix a house that they know is gonna be torn down, but they've been hearing this for 10 years. So, my question to you is, when you acquire these houses, and one of them will be mine, what is your timeframe on acquisition and tearing them down? Are you gonna leave a bunch of houses empty, so kids can break into them, so they can vandalize, so they can be, you know? And if that's the case, are, once you acquire them, are you turning them down within a certain timeframe, whether it's a two-week timeframe? How fast is it gonna change? Because it's gonna affect my job, it's gonna affect people in the neighborhood that live behind these houses, or live around these neighborhoods and stuff like that. So, that's my other question.
There's a balance there, you know, because we're going to work with the property owners, and there's gonna be some people who get their offers and want to move out, and they want to go right away. There's other people that might say, can we stay till the end of the school year? And so, there's gonna be a balancing act. And BLM, there's John, why don't you come on up here? John is our, he's handling our property acquisitions in Hammond, Munster, and Dyer. He's also working with us to put together the demolition package. Once we get a property, we want to close it up right away, we want to turn off the utilities, and then we'll package up the homes and get the demo contractor out there, just to your point, but if you want to comment on that, Johnny.
After we acquire the property and the tenants move, or the renter, or the owners move out, within 24 to 48 hours, it's boarded up and secured. It's asbestos tested and hazardous testing, and then it's all, all the utilities are disconnected within 30 days, service lines are cut off, and then it's available to demo contractor. At this time, we're still in development of those drawings and plans and specs. We assume to have a contractor on board kind of by the end of the year, which is around the time, I assume, the first wave of relocations are happening. So, you could likely see the demo take place within 60 to 90 days of us acquiring it, but it's maintained, grass is cut, you know, boarded up and secured to...
Yeah, because we don't want to see, as city officials, we don't want to have to be responsible for boarding up and having to, you know, vector control come out and taking care of the grass issues and costing more money on a city as a taxpayer as well. And then a safety issue is, you know, we got this demolition equipment and stuff like that, and we do it our own demos as well here in city, and, you know, we have our contractors, but we just want to see a safe, clean environment, and I don't need scrackers going through, kind of picking through houses, and, you know, we need some assurances as a city, as in code enforcement, as in building inspection and stuff like that, that everything is gonna be done with a quick and timely manner. That way, you know, our city isn't blighted. It's bad, we have blighted houses, and we've been dealing with blighted houses, especially along 10th Street, because nobody wants to fix them, nobody wants to take care of them, nobody wants to claim their certified letters, you know, because there's a code violation on them. And we've been dealing with this for years and years and years and years, and now we're to a point where, okay, we're gonna acquire our houses, and we just don't want houses sitting around for a year before we get all demoed.
And once we get acquisition, and someone will be contact in your office to develop these plans, we file kind of the INDOT spec, and it's a modified version. We have applied all local codes with, in Westlake, for instance, with Hammond has special requirements for permitting, and then the INDOT, and then IDOM requirements, and then in our rules or contracts, within, that house has to be down in 13 days. You can't, we're not allowing anybody to go in and start a demo and leave an open nightmare. It's a 13-day process, is what we've given them, and they're gonna do batches at a time.
Okay.
And then our responsibility for the design and the contractor doing the work will be MOT, safety, environmental.
I would add too, we have a meeting, so a couple of years ago, we met with fire, police, sue downs, you know, the whole gang in Michigan City to talk about this process and what the safety concerns would be with the buildings once they're vacant before they're demoed. And we already have a meeting set up, so I'll, just before you leave, I can add you to the agenda. It's fire, police, buildings, transit, and everybody kind of getting a refresher on where we're at, and this item will actually be on the agenda.
Okay. And then my last question is, we mentioned about fencing. One side's a way fence, one's gonna have bumps. What kind of fences are we talking about? Are we talking chain link fence? Are we talking wood fence? Are we talking PVC fence? Because here's the thing, if you've been through Gary, along 5th Street, or wherever it is, 4th Street, you got the double track going through, you got chain link going one way, you got chain link going another, and guess what accumulates along chain link fence? Garbage, debris, another eyesore for the city to look at. So, I'm just kind of curious, you know, because that's gonna be another issue with our city, is the collection of garbage and debris and the eyesore and...
Yeah, a couple, I would comment, that, number one, the fences in Gary are Gary property. So, it's not ours to maintain, it's not our property. If it's ours, we're gonna maintain it and take care of it. It's gonna be ours here. We're gonna maintain it and take care of it. That's just, you know, how we operate. And it's not gonna be pure chain link fence. I can't remember, it's not black iron ornamental, it's gonna look nice, but it's not gonna be pure chain link.
And the other side will be a concrete barrier, and we're in discussions with the city about what that will look like. Do we have form liners? Do we have other treatments on it?
That's on 11th Street.
I'm sorry, 11th Street, but we'll have, at the June workshop, you'll start to see actual renderings that show some of those treatments and options.
Other question as well, you are closing a bunch of streets off. My, my, my personal opinion, but I've also seen the effect of cul-de-sacs. One cul-de-sac is gonna be a great cul-de-sac, because you've got great neighbors and stuff. The next cul-de-sac's gonna be issues with a neighbor, and it turns out to be a junky cul-de-sac. You also have an issue with fire and safety, and I know this has been discussed, but, you know, with citizens, you're cutting off a lot of streets to, or a lot of access to emergency services. You're creating a divide between the north and south of Michigan City. You're creating, you're gonna create little pockets of, you know, I hate to say it, like depressed areas and then better areas, you know? With streets being open like 10th Street and stuff like that, we have a mixture. 11th Street, same thing, we have a mixture, but I feel it's, you're gonna, it's gonna cause issues with the neighborhoods and stuff, and I really like to see some of the less cul-de-sacs. You know, and you guys said there's eight crossings here, they're dangerous, top of 100. Yeah, I see kids playing on rail tracks and stuff like that, but, I mean, how many accidents? Does anybody know what kind of accidents we've had here, or eight fatalities, or...
Two.
Two in how many years?
The last four.
In the last four. Okay, and times how many trains go through and stuff like that. I'm just saying, I mean, I hate to say any, but that's, you know, that's all I got.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I'm Tommy Kalavich, I reside at 1316 Ohio Street. I just have a couple of questions. I have a lot of friends and close family members that live in the Eastport neighborhood, that that's the most densely populated section of Michigan City. I'd like to know, in addition to Carroll Ave, is the plan still on the works to close the Gray Street Crossing?
Yes, Gray Street is, there's two future crossings that would close, Carroll Ave and Gray Street.
Correct.
Yes.
I made my home away from home there at the Federal Mogul Plant on Royal Road, and it's adjacent to your tracks. Roughly 20 years ago, we had a carpool of our Macedonian ladies, they came from Mariva, they work on the blade line, they got hit by the commuter train there. I feel it's long overdue for to have crossing arms at that location, you know, like, let me go, something called the plant move Operation de Juarez. I hope that Mayor Perry someday gets on him and gets that... I hope that Mayor Perry someday gets on him and gets the plant back in operation again because I don't want to see an incident like that happen again. So it's smiley comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I thought you were coming up to comment.
I'm Kent Verhig, and I actually live west of here in the Pines. And you just, you mentioned an acquisition a few years ago of a property to the west a little bit, and I was just wondering if there are plans for that as part of this whole thing, or what's going to happen.
So 2015, I believe, we acquired the old Indiana block factory in the Pines. And that was a potential site for what is currently Carroll Avenue. The long-term plans, the short-term plans we have for Pines is when we do the double-track project, that will be one of our staging areas, so the contractors can access the tracks. Long-term, when we look at our physical plant and when we look at growth, we're going to need the entirety of Carroll Avenue for our storage, for maintenance of equipment. We look at facility needs, we might look towards that area as a development for, at least the areas close to the tracks, for our maintenance of way services. So the folks that maintain the bridges and the tracks, we could shift eastward, or westward, rather. And so we don't have a definitive plan yet. We've always said that we would work to free up the frontage area along 12 for commercial development, and we would try to move our, whatever the long-term plan is there for dealing a block factory close, as close to the tracks as we can.
That stuff tends not to be the most beautiful stuff, and with the proximity to the national park, would your plans include any sort of, you know, beautification or separating that from 12 and kind of hiding that type of heavy, it's not heavy industry, but you know what I mean, heavy work environment?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we actually, when we met with the council in Pines, we talked about working together with some kind of a Birmingham plan, with some kind of, I showed our gravities, and everybody yelled at me and said, no, you don't just put our gravities up, you put some other native plantings or something. But yeah, we would look to screen it off.
Okay, thank you. It was quick.
Tom Smith, 1710 West 10th Street. I'm going to be one of those unfortunate souls who is going to be forced out of his home, home that I've had for 30 years. As a senior citizen, the idea of having to move is not an exciting idea to me. But I do have some questions, more dealing with the city and what is going to happen to it. I was really interested in what crossings, were those deemed the eight most dangerous? Which crossings those actually were?
Oh, we don't have the list of those here, but I can get the state data to you.
Well, when I went on to the federal site, I saw that in the embedded tracks, there had only been four accidents in eight years, is what I saw on the federal site. Out of those accidents, there were no fatalities, in fact, there was no hospitalizations. Now, this has been a couple of years since I've looked at it, so I could be wrong on that. I'd be really interested in that. What is the current speeds that the trains are allowed to travel now?
It's not a speed limit from, that you might think of a highway speed limit, it's a speed limit imposed by the fact that we have curvatures in the tracks. We've got the station at 11th Street. We go across the Amtrak diamond there between 11th and 10th Street at about five miles an hour because it's a reverse S curve. So roughly, the top speed is probably 25 to 30 today.
Okay, that helps me. The time it takes to, the estimated time it will take to go to Chicago, not a hotshot run, but just a normal run, how much time do you think that's going to? So what's the savings, I guess, is what I'm getting at?
Probably an hour and 15 minutes to an hour and 18 minutes. So the slowest train we have today from Michigan City is probably an hour 45. So we're roughly shaving 20, 30 minutes on the slower trains. Our fastest train today is about an hour 30, and so we'll save 23 minutes off of that train.
So going back to the speed of the trains, so there is no actual speed set, it's just the limitation of the track, is that correct?
We're a Class IV designation railroad, which means we can go 80 miles an hour or less. From there, then, you have civil speed limitations based upon a curve that you're going around. So if you've got curvature in a track, that's going to cause a reduction in speed.
Now, I'm going to claim ignorance here, but I was under the understanding that there was like a 30 mile an hour limit period, like Amtrak only goes 30 miles an hour through Michigan City.
No.
It certainly doesn't do 80.
No, no, it wouldn't. As you're coming into town, they've got that sharp curve there over by the power plant, and then they have their stop there right after that. Once they proceed out of town, do they, if you remember what?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I totally want to say get out of town, but I'm talking where they're going through Michigan City. They're nowhere.
But when they're coming into Michigan City from the east, they're, they come in hot, and so...
They come in hot to Hitchcock, but after Hitchcock, they're not hot.
Yeah, then they slow down.
They're very slow. That's through Michigan City. Hitchcock is actually sort of on Michigan City.
It's not, it's, they're coming into the station, and they're coming into the bridge. So they've got restrictions, speed restrictions that are based upon their safe ability to operate on that section of track.
But once you get this in, you feel that 45 miles an hour is going to be more of a sort of top end for the?
There may be a section where we go 40. We're probably going to average 35 through town, and today, we probably average 20.
See, okay, one other question, just to go back. Do you know of those accidents, what was caused by freight and what was caused by passenger?
No, that I don't.
Okay, because I've worked on a railroad for a while. I know that freights have tremendous pushing power, and it takes a tremendous amount of time to stop a heavy freight train. I've also seen the passenger trains, and I'm sort of amazed how fast they can stop. I witnessed an accident. I was amazed that that train could stop as quick as it did. I think it stopped faster than a lot of cars could have stopped, which is pretty amazing to me. Good thing for your engineer. What I'm getting to this is, I'm not so afraid of the speed for your passenger train. I am terrified of the speed for the freight trains. If you look at the other freight lines that go through Michigan City, we have large barms around those, big areas that don't have housing into them. This is going to be in a very highly populated area, and they're going to be taking freight trains. If there is a derailment, it's a very high chance that these freight trains could go through homes. We haven't even talked about hazardous materials. God help us if there's a spill. So these are the things that I'm worried about. Freight trains are going to be going through Michigan City faster. And I don't care if they're going through at 12:00 in the morning, or, you know, or if it's, it's the possibility of derailment. I have the benefit of hearing these freight trains go through every week. Sundays is their big time to run. These trains are in the worst possible condition that you can imagine them going through. You hear them going down the road, and they're going clunk, 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 clunk. They're screeching, they're screaming, the cars are in abysmal shape. And I'm supposed to trust them at 45 miles an hour?
I don't think they're going to be running any faster, but I, but I'll, we'll find out. I don't think we're enhancing their speed through town.
Why would theirs not be enhanced?
Well, they, we proceed faster than they're allowed to proceed.
Okay, is that a federal law, or is it, who regulates this?
The FRA. The FRA regulates that, usually freight trains, and now they still run slower than we do through town. And I want to say it's 25 miles an hour is their top speed.
That's going to be their top speed through town. They're not, they're not allowed to go faster. And with positive train control, what the mayor talked about, one of the other things that will happen is if you are speeding, you will be, the computer will shut you down. So even if you don't believe that they're going to honor that speed restriction, with positive train control, the computer will shut them down.
I was going to say, right now, I can guarantee there's been times where the freight has gone through a lot faster than that. We were talking about relocation. It sort of reminds me what the shoes happened with the Nazis. As far as the fences, you said were not South Shores. So, believe me, I've been following this as close as anyone can possibly follow this. At one time, when we had the meetings where we got to decide where, I never got to decide anything, but in those meetings, they were talking about the fencing. At that point, the fencing was Michigan City's responsibility. So now this fencing is going to be the South Shores?
Yes.
Do you have any of these fences that you're maintaining now?
Trying to think, most of the fencing along our lines is recently owned.
Okay, so we got to take your word for it?
Yeah.
Not that what belongs to you, just how you will take care of it. We talked, them gentlemen was up here talking about demolition and so forth, hazardous material, when they talked about asbestos and so forth. Of course, asbestos is pretty safe until it's airborne. How is that going to be addressed so neighborhoods aren't going to have dust blowing into their yard from a house that has asbestos?
John heard your question, he's coming up front.
And then 72 hours of acquisition of the property, testings on a whole house for hazardous waste, lead, asbestos, what have you. If I identified, part of the contracting team has to hire a specialized firm to abate the all-federal codes and laws for safety.
Okay, so you will actually have professional abatement teams?
Correct, they have to be certified, I don't know the name of the certification, the certs, but they have to be a professional licensed IDEM, EPA, to follow all these guidelines you have to fill. And IDEM requests for the demo stuff, and you have to acknowledge what's on the property and how you're abating it, and then have record of where it was disposed of.
So the homes will be bagged and stuff, so you won't have airborne?
I'm not exactly sure their process, we haven't gotten that far in Westlake, but if it's whether it's airborne or if they have to wet, you know, sometimes you wet and things with lead to make it not airborne, or if they bag the house.
Yeah, I was going to say, every house there is over 100 years old that you'll be taking, pretty much, you know, so you're going to have lead everywhere, you're going to have asbestos on them, you know, so I was just wondering.
We've actually done some modeling, or if you will, estimation, and there are periods before where asbestos wasn't used. So, you know, I don't think it's 1930 or so. So it depends on, some of the homes, if they're older than that, won't have the asbestos, but they may have the wet-based paint.
I've been saying, most of them have asbestos because the heating systems were updated from time to time when they went through.
And they may.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Heather Ennis. I reside in Porter, Indiana, to 4 Springwood Court. My business is at 6100 South Port Road in Portage. I am the president of the Regional, or of the Northwest Indiana Forum, and I'm so excited about this project. I can't thank you or commend you enough on all the hard work that both of you have done and that the RDA has done to get this project to the state that it is in. It is a game changer for the region. When you look at the maps that you showed earlier and talked about the rail infrastructure over in Illinois, and then what we have here, we're woefully behind. The attraction of talent is critically important to all companies, no matter where they're located, and we're in a global fight for talent to get people to locate in our communities. And being able to connect to the third largest economy in the country is a critical asset to us. So thank you for expediting that, thank you for all of your hard work, and thank you again for helping to move the region forward. We greatly appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? You know I can't leave without saying something.
Joe Corr, 3768 North, 525 West, Fort County. Citizen of Michigan City all my life. I got to tell you, this was one of the most and best meetings that the city council and the mayor, and Mike Nolan, you and Nick D., I think that you've put together, and certainly the public with all the questions you had here tonight, you answered them, you answered them direct. I think this is one of the most positive meetings, I think, that I have attended, and I want to compliment the city council and certainly the mayor and you for putting it together. Thank you.
One last thing that I'd like to do, Mr. Nolan, is in response to Mr. Smith's concern about demolition. In my career, I've had a fair amount of experience in environmental work, and I will, here and now, ensure the people of Michigan City that because this demolition work is going to be done inside our city limits, our code compliance will be watching, we will be the watchdogs. We know what needs to be done to comply with federal standards. The material as the house is demolished, the federal requirement talks about visible emissions. All the materials will be wetted as the premises is demolished, and they'll be disposed 100% in compliance with federal requirements. I will guarantee the people of Michigan City that as long as I'm mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's about it, so I'd like to thank Mr. Nolan for coming out. Oh, wait, one more comment. I'll speak later.
Paul Presmelinsky, 1716 Washington Street, Second Ward Councilman. I have a question that's been on my mind for a long time. In the Northern Indiana District Transportation Authority, correct?
Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District.
Under the legislation that was passed in, at the state level, do you, can your board, or does the board have the authority to pass a tax on the Fort County area or a levy? And if that's answered in a positive, is there any thought in the future in the financial mix to pass a tax on the Fort County area?
I'll speak for my new trustee, who was appointed by that legislation.
I'm talking about, you know...
But we don't have, the short answer is, Nick D. does not have any taxing authority.
They do not?
Do not.
And what, it has to go back at the county levels?
Well, our funding is a mixture of passenger revenue, revenue receiv- received from South Shore Freight, who's a tenant on our property. Metro pays us to run the Illinois service because we pick up riders in Illinois, so we have revenue from them. And we get funding from the state of Indiana, both from a capital standpoint and also from an operating standpoint. So it's a mixture, but we have, and the county contributions have been strictly, this, actually the counties, the first time, originally when we were put together in '77, there was a county initial contribution, and then it was all state money, and then this last go-around for the double-track project, the four counties came together to put in funding for double-track. That's the only county money.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks everyone for coming out. I want to thank you, Mr. Nolan, for helping us with this workshop, and I wanted to ask Mr. Porter to give their website again for anyone who couldn't attend to get any further information. to get any further information.
I'll post the final slides as it comes here.
Google South Shore Live will come up.
Or Google Double Track.
Or Double Track.
Also want to thank all fellow council members and the mayor and his staff for coming out and all the public. Thank you.
[applause][1783.13]